I know, I feel it. Mike Thompson, board, please rise during the meeting, reciting the pledge and then remain standing as we address this prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Father, thank you so much for delighting, allowing us to come together again. We ask you to give us peace, wisdom, and the proper ideas of what needs to happen in this city. We thank you for your fortitude. Amen.
Mr. Ferricks.
Here.
Ms. Stevens.
Here.
Ms. Harland.
Here.
Mr. Reed.
Mr. Rock.
Here.
Mr. Burris.
Here.
Mr. Kim.
Here.
David Corn.
Thank you. Moving on, public participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer, the mayor. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to commencement of the meeting and must address the council from the table provided. Public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-2 and be limited to five minutes or less. This evening, we have John Dunn. Your turn.
I was going to listen to everybody else before I tapped in.
You're first.
All right, so the proposed deal is one in Bowling Alley area. My concerns are number one, parking; number two, the kids, no sidewalks, and them going across the road to the park.
Is that all? Anything else to say?
No, I just might want to make sure that's addressed. There's not enough parking spaces, no place for the kids to go.
Very good. Thank you for your input. Next is Josh Dunn.
I would say the same thing.
Okay, thank you. Brett Sikorski.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize about previous public speaker. I've read through the document from the planning and zoning board. It's understood there are two variances to this, to the normal zoning. One was for multifamily usage in a commercial area, so changing zoning and a variation of the parking from ninety-two to fifty-eight spots. This is based on a recommendation from the zoning committee, I guess, or board, that -- and they listen here in order. I kind of take some issues. Number two was the condition of use permit will not be injurious to the use of impotent or other property in any vicinity, but during that discussion, one of the neighbors was complaining about parking already. So, I mean, there is concern from an immediate neighbor, and Mr. Dunn just spoke, his immediate neighbor. That's one either side. Both sides are concerned, so at number two, there's definite concern. So, I highly recommend on that concern. But then number three was normal orderly development improvement or selling properties permitted to the district. And then four, adequate utilities, drainage, right-of-way easements, and other necessary facilities. And it was just brought, there's no sidewalks in commercial area. You just put fifty-four residential people without a sidewalk on State Route 105 and thirty mile an hour speed limit. Is there plans of lowering the speed limit to twenty there? There's also number five, says adequate existing ingress and easiness, so design minimalized traffic congestion. Is there plans on a stoplight or stop sign on Route 5? And are we paying for that? Is the state paying for it? Tepan Village put two entrance exits in the same speed limit thirty-five. There's not room for two here. I'm concerned about acres. I'm concerned about the sidewalk. I'm concerned about kids, and we'll talk about that a little bit in a second here. It continues on to number six, and then we go further. And I'm like, I'm not a very good speaker, but briefly, the town and people here were very accepting of the senior living facility, faced with good faith that that was what was going to happen. And variations were granted for that purpose because seniors don't generally have two cars if you're one, and drive very often. That's not the case anymore. You're looking at, I assume, assisted living on low income. It's not really delineated out here. Is this condos? Is it apartments? But now we have a different situation. You have kids, you have more vehicles. There, that's not been addressed, and this has happened very fast. I'm not seeing any studies. They said there's a study here that there's more, there's need for rent-assisted living in the area. Is there some study left that I missed? There's some talk about need for low-income homes, but are these homes or are these apartments? Not that apartment can't be home, but I don't know if it's condo or home yet that's not discussed here either. And I've seen no studies saying we need more apartments in the area. So, I'm not sure where that came from. And in that same group, they said there was a study about parking being done. Does anyone have that study? Has that been questionably done? I'd like to know who completed it, you know, was it commissioned by somebody, or does anyone have a copy of it? Because both neighbors are concerned about it. So, if it's published, I'd like to see it before anyone would vote on something like that. Quick summary, I find it hard to recommend a project like this in our community, because I just don't see it being advantageous to us. I see concerns, and I'm not, I'm asking, what is the positive to it? When you've got enough concerns and not seen a whole bunch of positives, it's hard to really recommend that. I do wish the person who owns the space an opportunity to make a living, which is not sure this is the right place or something like that, or if there's a need for something like that in this community at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Dick Zimmerman.
I'm speaking today as superintendent of schools in Monticello, USDA 25. My concern is related to the MVA Partners forty-six unit apartment complex. The project was originally approved as an over fifty-five senior apartment complex. The school district had no concern with that project, as it would not add, it would add no students to our population and thus have no financial impact. Ordinance 2020-03 requests to change the project to a low-income apartment complex with no age restrictions. My issue has nothing to do with the low-income side of the project. However, I do have concerns related to the potential financial impact that the project will have on our school district. An apartment complex built within the school district will likely increase the number of students that attend our schools. More students are certainly fine, but more students also mean more expenses, which is also fine if the students come with some additional revenue. The complex has forty-six units, including one and two bedroom apartments. This could mean an additional twenty-five to fifty students. School districts in Illinois are generally funded with state dollars and property tax dollars. Because we receive a large portion of our state revenues from CPRT, we will see very little, if any additional revenue from the state for the additional students that would live in these apartment, in this apartment complex. The other major portion of our revenue comes from property taxes. While we do choose to live in a school district with a very low tax rate, our tax rate continues to be in the bottom five percent of all unit school districts in the state of Illinois. About half of the total property taxes paid in our communities goes to the schools. We will not see any additional property tax dollars from the building of this apartment complex as it currently sits within TIFF2, which is, which was approved by the city in 2006. TIFF2 includes commercial and business properties along Market Street extending out to the Kirby Complex. Schools are rarely proponents of TIFF districts, as no increased property taxes are received by the district from any new development within the TIFF district for twenty-three years. That said, we do understand that TIFF districts, when used correctly, serve to improve the infrastructure that allows for redevelopment to occur within those TIFFs. TIFF districts generally do not include residential properties. This is currently true for Monticello TIFF2. The school district would likely vehemently oppose any residential TIFF districts unless an agreement was struck in advance to make the school district whole on lost property tax revenues when students are added to the district. The original MVA request and city approval did add a senior residential apartment complex to TIFF2, but as said earlier, it would not house new students. The approval of this zoning variance to eliminate the over fifty-five age requirement would come with a formal request from the school district to be made whole, as required by TIFF laws, for the additional students living there. Assuming just twenty-five students, likely on the low end, at our, at our most recent instructional cost per pupil of eleven thousand dollars per student, could cost nearly two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars. Schools are fine with more students, but we need them in property tax-paying houses in order to cover at least some of the cost. If the estimated increased value of the Bowling Alley property due to the apartment complex is three million dollars, the total annual tax for the schools would be about thirty-seven-thousand-five-hundred. As stated, we will see none of it due to the TIFF. The TIFF is not supposed to be for houses or apartments. If approved, the school district would expect, would at least expect the TIFF to make us whole on this property, since it will have an effect on the bottom line. Thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars a year is a far cry from two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand. Personally and obviously, I am a supporter of Monticello, and I'm a believer in growth and change. I would like to see new houses and subdivisions in and around our town. By the way, we are currently almost out of build-ready residential lots in the district. I don't like to see empty storefronts. I wish something would go into the ShopCo building on the Pepson site. I think Amazon should put a warehouse in the General Cable plant, and I would even be fine with a recreational cannabis facility in Monticello or Puyott County, just for the sales tax money. All that being said, the school district is one of the main reasons why people move to Monticello, and we need to ensure that it is supported in all ways, including financially.
Thank you.
This project, with a, with a negative financial impact on Monticello schools for this reason alone, I would urge the councils to vote no on this project variance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm Dick Wilken, and I'm a resident here at Bible Two East Washington. We have done a number of projects here in town, and every time we were held to the latter law on all of the questions, and they do not seem to be the same here. So, we don't appreciate this. We have, we agree with what the school said, and we agree with what Fred said. And that's about all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Dave. Steve Schreffler.
I started to prepare some notes for what I would want to bring to your attention as far as this project is concerned. And I went and printed it about an hour ago, and I noticed it was over fifteen hundred words. I thought, forget that, I'll just have to live. For everything these other people mentioned, I could, I could give you ten more reasons for you to reject this proposal. Hopefully, all of you've had the opportunity to view the video of the planning commission meeting that was held Tuesday night, that's Tuesday night. And in doing so, though, if you looked at it and said to yourself, is this guy credible at all? Is he telling us the truth? He's naming phantom studies, one of which he commissioned, supposedly some national firm, came to Monticello and did a site survey, and agreed that they only had one parking spot per unit. You've heard from other owners of apartment complexes in Monticello, and they've all told you that two of the spaces is needed. And if you look around at the existing parking at, at the other apartment buildings in town, you don't see gaping holes. There's not an overplanned supply of parking, and they all met the standard. There's a reason why the city of Monticello has a requirement of two parking spots per If this goes in, it's going to affect us in more than one way. One thing it'll do is take an already saturated market, I wouldn't say over-saturated, but there's never been a time that anybody's had a problem finding apartment in Monticello. No apartment building owner will tell you that they maintain a hundred percent occupancy. Most of them may have a waiting list, but what's going to happen is, this will go in, and it'll prevent any other developer from wanting to come to Monticello, because then we will be over-saturated with apartments, even though these are, this is a horrible location. When the first proposal came along, you'll recall, the property to the south was available. So, it wasn't a matter of, oh, well, we just can't fit this in here. They could have, if they bought enough land, but it's a profit thing. Keep in mind, these are out of town developers, out of state developers, and so that means any rent that they bring in is not going to stay local, it's going to go straight to their corporate offices. If there was a need for apartments in Monticello, we have a lot of intelligent developers that would have already built apartments if they thought there was a need for more. As a thirty-year landlord in Monticello, I stayed away from apartments for that very reason, because there wasn't a need, and I wanted to always maintain a hundred percent occupancy in my, in my rental units. These apartments are going to be six hundred square feet. To give you an idea, a single wide mobile home, a twelve by sixty, is seven hundred and twenty square feet. This is even smaller, even smaller mobile homes. And these people will cram as many people in there as, as they can fit. It may be called a one-bedroom, but it's also got a living room with a couch. So, I don't know how many people are going to live in this. There is no, not enough parking for the drivers that would be there, and their friends, and of course, when you're, have teenagers, teenagers have friends with guards, there's going to be probably double the number of parking that they're, that they're proposing here. Keep in mind, the city of Monticello has rejected this type of project in recent history twice. Once was a cheese factory across from the cemetery. They wanted to put, I believe it was forty-eight units in there. Same thing, problem with ingress, problem with parking. The chief of police at the time told the city council that if you allowed this, that I don't remember what his percentage was, but a large percentage of police calls were going to be to that location. He could tell you that just absolutely certainty from history. Not long ago, we also had a proposal going where the bus park was, similar situation. Interestingly enough, if you take the number of units and the acreage of the lot that he wanted to do, it was actually better than this one. And, and he rejected that, and then he withdrew his application when he knew that he couldn't get approval. At the very least, and I think, I think you should just reject this outright, but if you are so inclined not to, then somebody, that person should make a motion to table this not, this is a, this is an ordinance, right? So, it takes a second reading. So, whatever you do, don't fast-track this. There's no advantage to Monticello. This developer sells this project like they always do, then we're going to be left holding the bag. You're going to have a development here with no way, unless the city pays Dunn or the owner of Foster's Inn a whole bunch of money to buy more parking. It's just, I could go, that was five minutes? Believe me, that was less than ten percent of what I could tell you, and I don't have anything whatsoever good to say about this project. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Let's do a motion, consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items is listed. Claims report, claims dated January fourteen, two thousand, twenty twenty through January twenty-seven, twenty twenty. Meeting minutes, city council meeting minutes, January thirteen, twenty twenty. Planning and zoning board meeting minutes, November eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Historic preservation meeting minutes, November fifth, two thousand nineteen. Budget report, December two thousand nineteen, and treasurer's report, December two thousand nineteen. Is there a motion to pass the consent, approve the consent agenda? Is there a second? Are there any comments or questions? Hearing your same, none, I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kim.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Mr. Rock.
Yes.
Ms. Harland.
Yes.
Ms. Stevens.
Yes.
And Mr. Ferricks.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Mayor's report. E-waste recycling collection is this Wednesday for the twenty-ninth, from nine to twelve at Puyott County USDA office, which I think is down south, right? South, there we go. That's Wednesday from nine to twelve. The Sangamon Valley C, the Ovis Class Business Battle of the Bags will be this Saturday, February first, at First Christian Church. There are some students from the C V C E O class here that will be presenting about the program later in the meeting. Don't forget also, on Saturday this week, it's Mud Puppy Day. Saturday from one to four at Monarch Brewing Company. We signed an official proclamation, this is something, Terry went last year and said it was a lot of fun, so that's Terry talking, just think about that. Okay, and moving on. The first of four early bird days will be next Wednesday, February fifth, from eight a.m. to five p.m. at the municipal building. Pool passes will be sold at a discounted rate, and tickets are on sale for the annual Monticello Main Streets Chocolate Fantasy Event, which is next Friday, February seventh, from five thirty in downtown Monticello. Moving on to new business. At this time, I would like to appoint Mary to vote as the holder person in Ward One. I think she's a very qualified candidate, very qualified person. I think she brings a wealth of knowledge to the council, and I look forward to working with her. I entertain a motion to approve her appointment.
Absolutely.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Peter Roll call, please.
Ms. Stevens.
Yes.
Ms. Harland.
Yes.
Mr. Rock.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Mr. Kim.
Yes.
Mr. Ferricks.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Mary, will you, or actually, they're going to get sworn in right up here by the door.
Having been appointed.
To the office of Alderwoman Ward One.
To the office of Alderwoman Ward One.
In the city of Monticello.
In the city of Monticello.
In the county of Puyott.
In the county of Puyott.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Alderwoman Ward One.
Of the office of Alderwoman Ward One.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Sangamon Valley CEO Program presentation.
So, the Sangamon Valley CEO Program is something that just started this year, made up of five high schools, and hopefully, stealing all your material, but the city of Monticello is one of thirty-seven investors, I think we have right now. And Sarah Shepherd, who is the amazing facilitator of day students, has brought three of the eight to kind of share.
Great. Thanks for having us here this evening. Like Kelly said, I am the facilitator of Sangamon Valley CEO. We are lucky to have Kelly to serve on our board and spearheading getting this program started. It has been a great inaugural year, and we have a great group of eight students. It's been fun to see how much they've grown, we're in our third quarter now. And really, the Sangamon Valley CEO is a business course in which we believe that the working professional can present the knowledge and pass that on to the students in the best way possible. So, we've been on over thirty site visits to different companies. We've brought in around fifteen guest speakers. The students are going to tell you a little bit more about the other rules and the things that we are doing in the class, so that'll have them introduce themselves and explain a little bit more to you.
I'm Colin, doing the senior Monticello High School. So, site visits are three to four days a week. Go to different businesses in the communities, go being Cerrodo, Argenna, Bement, Monticello. And my favorite site visit this year has to be Kirby Medical Center, since it's right here in Monticello. And just seeing the corporate structures, and I learned so much just from like ninety minutes a day in that class. It's something that I cannot explain. This is definitely showed me what I actually want to do with my, with my own business, and just seeing how professionals do their work, it's just amazing.
Yeah, the combination of site visits and guest speakers, like Colin said, happens three to four times a week, and learning from people that are actually out in the world doing it is, it's uncomparable to any other, like in classroom learning, it's invaluable by comparison.
My name is Eric Chessler, senior at Monticello High School. So, we go on site visits, like Colin said, and at the end of every semester, we have a project, which is either class business or an individual business. Right now, we're working on a class business, and basically what that is, is a bags or courtney tournament. It's actually at First Christian Church in Monticello this Saturday, and starts at ten, I believe. So, basically, yeah, there's sort of the forty-something teams, if I'm correct.
Hopefully, forty teams are.
Yeah, we're hoping for that.
If you'd like to sign on. We're still working on a goal that you were.
We're looking to show up, be, play sometime, and I'm very excited to see how this goes.
Tell them a little bit about what they can expect of the bags tournament.
Well, I guess, what's to expect, you know?
You expect to have fun.
But I was thinking, you've been, you've been planning a lot more than just the bags aspect of it.
No music playing, there'll be a fifty-fifty raffle, we'll have concessions, Mama Tees and Bement actually sponsored us and donated twelve pizzas.
I'm one of our several sponsors.
Yeah, one of our several sponsors. We brought in about fifteen hundred dollars from sponsors, if I'm correct.
And what's neat about that is just the investment that businesses in our local communities have made. It's not odd for us to leave a site visit and overhear the students saying, I didn't know something like this existed in the local community. And there are so many fabulous businesses in our smaller communities, and I love that that the CEO or the president of the company takes the time to invest their knowledge into the students of these site visits. It's just a great experience.
I guess I'm ready to, so I'm Briggs Holtz, I'm also at St. James Monticello High School. But on the days that we don't have guest speakers or site visits to go to, so the one or two days a week that we're not out doing things, we, each quarter, we meet at a different location. Not in a classroom, it's usually a, what do you call it? I just.
A one-site within a.
Yeah, there you go. It was like within a business, a local business. First semester, we met at Suzanne Will's Law Firm in Monticello. Second semester, we were at, we were at Cerrodo Argenna. This semester, we were at, in Cerrodo at, I'm going to be building there. And in those days that we're in the classroom, classrooms, not usually a classroom technically, but we spent time working on, first semester's our class business, and that, like Eric said, that's our Bible. But second semester. But second semester, it's mostly our individual businesses. So one of the unique things about this class is we're allowed, not allowed, we're encouraged and, yes, they're expected to start our own company and business throughout the course of the class. So I think next week, we're really gonna start hitting it pretty hard. We're in the final stages of our class business this week. We finalize it next week, and then we'll start getting into our personal businesses. So I started the class interested, but I knew nothing about business. But now I'm confident that I might at least have the resources to get where I need to be to start my own business. And I know basics, but I know there's always still more to learn, and I'm looking forward to continuing to learn that.
So tell us what your business is worth, Tim.
All right.
Your next one.
So my business is a board game company. Some friends and I got together, we were playing chess, and we realized that we should create our own board game. And so we did, just out of boredom, I guess, or anything. And then I figured, you know, I've got this class of business I have to start, I have the ability to take this and turn it into something profitable. So that's what I'm having to do with my class business.
So that's kind of what the program, one of the great things, is it allows them those things that maybe they wouldn't necessarily take the risk, and it's certainly safer to do it here where it's okay to fail, as opposed to when you're out in a mortgage and kids and things like that. Lots of dudes in the room. But, you know, this program, it encompasses five school districts, so that's a huge community to embrace. And people just scream Monticello kid, but we have Argenna, Orianna, Be Ment, Cerro Gordo also participating this year. They've gotten really close, and it's wonderful to see that they're, you know, it doesn't just stop at nine o'clock when the class ends.
No, it definitely does not stop at nine o'clock.
We do this class for our personal businesses.
So I like the construction aspect of everything. My dad owns his own construction business. So I kind of wanted to do somewhat construction, but I also wanted to branch off of my own. And I did a job a couple years ago for my grandma, was making a brick walk path for like a landscape, hardscape stuff. It just really showed me like, this is so cool, and having satisfaction with actually seeing it. So that's why I'm doing my own landscaping company, more hardscape than some softscape side. All right, so with me in my free time, I just like making music. It's not real instruments, it's on the computer. I know you guys are older, which is fine, but... It's all like software based, it's not like real instruments, but this is my free time time where I just like to go in there and just make whatever music I can. I like to make it for like whatever advertisements on radio or TV that I could get a chance of, so.
So if anyone helps anyone to network with, we do website music or anything like that, that's one of the parts of this class is, I obviously do not have all the answers to their questions, but within the network of our communities, we do. And Eric was talking about doing something much safer, but like Kelly said, it's an opportunity that it's not really failure, it's trying something and seeing how it goes. We, there are real dollars in some student, for their class business, the money raised through their class business will be the seed money for their individual businesses. And then anything that they make with their individual businesses, they are expected to report for taxes, but then that money that they generate with their individual business is theirs to take with them and probably, hopefully see their future ventures or college or whatever is next for each of the students.
When we did our presentations to the local schools, junior class of each local school, try to recruit more people for next year, one of the major concerns was, you know, what if your business fails? Well, if you can't do it. And that was one of my concerns as well, like what happens when you can't start a business? But to be completely honest, this class has taught me that, you know, not only failure isn't really failure. Failure means, okay, maybe you don't make money, maybe your business runs in the ground, but you still learn from that experience. And the class as a whole understands that as well, and your grade isn't gonna be affected by that. You'll just do what you're supposed to do and try it and do everything you can to get there. If you can't get there for some reason, so be it, that's part of the learning curve. And so aside from that entirely, now being there, even to start my own business, I'm not entirely, I'm not scared of it. I'm pretty confident that even if it does run in the ground, but I hope it doesn't, obviously, but even if it does, I think it will be all right.
And well, that's actually what I like about it, because in the real life world in business, that's what it's about, it's about taking risks and possibly failing, but you just have to go through that, you know? There'll be a lot of real life examples in this program. I'm gonna be completely honest, Dr. Zimri, I'm a guest. I'm not a student at all, I'm a C student. And this class brings out what I'm good at. And it's just neat to see that, it's unbelievable. I have an A, so.
The class isn't structured the same as a normal class. You can be a C student, and as long as you have some work ethic, you'll be okay. There's not much memorization involved, it's all, it's just learning and trying. It's really just real world things. To be honest, we're not as much as people, high school should maybe be.
Yes, it seems to be trustworthy, hardworking, and motivated. That's what makes a great CEO student.
Will you take questions, Eric? Rodney, were you saying that earlier? Was that you or someone else?
How did you settle on the Bags Tournament? Deciding, was there focus groups that said this could succeed?
So what we did, we were actually in Suzanne Wells' law firm, at least they gave us, I think, five sticky notes and said, come up with...
Each.
Each, yeah, five sticky notes each. Like, what do you want the class business to do? And the battle of the bags, what everybody's voting on is the last...
We all wrote down five ideas, not sure anything, we had some of them horrible, some of them were actually decent. And put them all up on the wall, and then we went through, I think it was three different stages, and we narrowed it down, and we ended up settling on Bags Tournament. We figured that was something that could involve multiple communities, that people of all ages would enjoy, and we could do it in the middle of winter, that was a big thing.
Henry Al, starting your own business, I mean, obviously you talked about networking, and that's gonna be a key component of your success moving forward. Obviously, you're working with other schools. How's that dynamic been from when it started to when it is now? I'm sure those relationships were obviously were brand new when you met them, but now they've probably developed more to friendships and, you know, potential business partners, maybe something like that?
Yeah. An example, Briggs, I didn't get along, started a class. Now I call one of my really important times, I talk to my... Yeah, same with me, I haven't really talked to any of these two guys. All besides football, but. Basically, like after that, we're just a lot closer now.
And the other schools, especially, we never met any of the, any of the people from the other schools, there's five other students. And, you know, it's easy to just do your own thing, see people outside of school and stuff, but being in a class that's non-conventional, you're forced to talk to people. And the first two weeks were rough, they were... I've always been a fairly social guy, so I've been able to talk to people, but other people in the class weren't the same way. And I wasn't as social as I could have been either. So you try, or not, and at first, you don't get along, and just everybody does their own thing, nobody really wants to communicate as much as they should, and then I think the first time we really started to like force each other to talk to each other was about three weeks in, right? All right, we didn't do anything in the first two weeks, that helped, but I would say, it wasn't the first three days, wow. That helped, but about two or three weeks in, we did a badge business, which we had to name badges to go to, to Lisa's, get hers with her. And in order to do that, we had to figure out how to raise money. Lisa told us, she goes, here's your project. I'm gonna help you do it, but you gotta figure out how to make it happen. And we had no money, we had nothing to choose, and it can't be out of practice, it has to be paid for from the class funds, which class funds I'd help you get. So we had to figure out how to go to the sponsors, how to make a badge that would have our pictures and individual names on it. And having that first project just kind of get thrown in the deep end right off the beginning, kind of forced everybody to talk to each other and go out, and we had to go with these sponsorships and force other people to actually talk to adults and people that they've never met before and ask for, how do you go to somebody and ask for money, right? But we figured it out.
So if you want more information on the CEO Program, you can just go to sangamonvalleyceo.com or even follow their Facebook or Twitter page. And like I said, they go through a lot of site visits, they're dressed like this, they meet at seven, it's supposed to be 7:30, but they're back there by 7:15, and as you can imagine, covering five school districts, if you're by Argenna, you're gonna have to haul it to get down to Cerro Gordo. So it teaches a big component of responsibility, and again, connects them to their community. They learn how to dress nicely. And the transformation from when they started in August to even a month in, is phenomenal, and these are gonna be some great students and adults.
Best way to contact us is just come to Bag Church on Saturday.
Thank you very much. All right. Ordinance 2020-02, an ordinance amending chapter 93 of Title IX of the City of Monticello Code of Orders is to regulate cannabis as provided in the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act. Am I talking to you, John?
Yes. As everybody knows, as of January 1st, 2020, the Cannabis Recreation and Tax Act became effective and is now legal for adults aged 21 and over to possess cannabis in a recreational setting. Certain provisions of the Act are enforceable by a civil monetary penalty, and that's what I'm talking about tonight. Some of these offenses are possessioned by those under 21, providing false identification to purchase, prohibited conduct in public places such as walking down the street and taking of recreational cannabis, and also cultivation by those who are not holding medical cannabis cards that are featured in, I think it's five planes. Other offenses are for dispensaries, for waste and disposal of cannabis, also for advertising, on-firmers consumption. While I initially was thinking on-firmers consumption was not something we would deal with here, it can be if a bar decides they wanna allow onsite consumption, that's not legal for them to do, and we can cite them under state statute at this point. So while some of these may not be necessary at this time, because we don't have any dispensaries in Monticello, I believe it's important to get the ordinances in place, so if the time comes, we can enforce the issues at a local level. So what this will do is shift any fines for the violations from going to county and state to state here in Monticello only, so that the money generated would be city money, not county and state money. So it's recommended that the city council discuss and pass ordinance amending chapter 93, Title IX of the City of Monticello Code of Ordinances to Regulate Cannabis as provided in the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act.
Thank you, John. Is there a motion to waive or second reading? So moved. Is there a second?
Taken.
Thank you.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Bo?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
And Mr. Frer?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Okay. What John just said, I think, is we have control over what comes in. We don't have to, it doesn't pass through someone else, it goes somewhere else, fines etc.
Yeah, the fine comes directly to the city.
Directly to the city. Any comments or questions before I ask for a motion? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2020 and ordinance amending copy of chapter 93 of Title IX of the City of Monticello Code of Ordinances to Regulate Cannabis as provided in the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing your saying none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Frer?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Stunt?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you for being proactive, John, I appreciate that. Now we're down to ordinance 2020-03, 1412 North Market Street Amendment to Conditional Use of Variants for Health Health.
Yes, so last year, Miller Valentine received a conditional use of variants for a project that they were proposing at 1412 North Market Street, the current bowling area. That was a three-story, 46-unit development. That would be for those age 55 and older. The conditional use that they received was to allow more effectively loan use in the business zone, and the variance was to reduce the parking requirement of two per unit down to 1.26 spaces per unit. The council at the time, literally almost to the day of this time last year, approved those requests. They have since amended their project. Would like to remove the component for 55 and older, but allow it to be open to all. They still would like to market it to seniors, but would move that senior-only component. And because the ordinance 2019-08 was initially specific to the senior housing project, we asked for an amendment to reflect that change. Just for the record, if the city council were to deny this request, that initial ordinance still stands. So last Tuesday, January 21st, the planning zoning board voted public hearing at their meeting. They heard from a couple residents, one Jason property owner who we worked with earlier today, was concerned about parking, over full owns the lot. In addition to that, there was some concerns about, I don't know, if there were children , whether they were playing and so forth. After further discussion, the planning zoning board voted to recommend approval of the conditional use permit and variance request amendments for 1412 North Market, four yes, one no, two absent. Phil Tracy is here representing the owner, and Hugh Mon is representing the developer, and he has a short presentation for you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Hugh Mon, I'm senior vice president at MDA Partners. Thank you for making the time to allow me to present on P F Ops. So just a quick introduction of MDA Partners. So we have been developing or purchasing senior housing for over 25 years. We've developed over 6,000 units in 16 states. We have a number of properties in Illinois, including Norton, Grand Tool. We have a development under construction in Chicago, and we will start a development in Bloomington, Illinois, probably in March. Here's a map of our national presence. Here are a few examples of what our developments look like. Here's an aerial of the subject property, so it's Monticello Bowl. We have the uses to the left and right, the sports facility, and the foster inn, and then beyond that, we have some single-family homes, and then the park across the street. So we think this is a good location to have some density where it's not disconnected from residential, but there is a buffer from the single-family homes. And there's also access to amenities like the pharmacy and the park. So a little further information about the development. So as Kelly indicated, we have made no changes to the physical structure of the building. It's still going to be 46 units. It will remain 35 one-bedroom units, 11 two-bedroom units. We will also, since the last meeting, we did, hearing the feedback we received on the play space for the children, we did add a play lot in the back in the northwest corner of the site, so we will have that for the children. That said, we don't really anticipate that many children. Again, the 35 one-bedrooms, we don't expect any children. And then 11 two-bedroom units, I imagine being a handful of children, I don't really anticipate that many. So we did get a parking analysis from Sam Schwartz, transportation consultant. They've been doing... They've been doing transportation consulting for twenty-five years. They have offices in Chicago and five other cities across the country. And this is a directly from, cutting case, this little table, cutting case directly from this study, for affordable housing in this sort of sized town, they anticipate that the peak parking demand would be less than, just about one parking space at the peak on weekdays per unit. So that would be a peaked amount of forty-six parking spaces, we will have fifty-eight parking spaces, we will have more than enough parking for me to demand, and a lot of that is due to, again, we do have mostly one bedrooms and a few two bedrooms. This data is based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Edition. It's based on a lot of data across the country, and we think it's reliable. And I'm happy to send that study to Callie, who can share with each of you if you like. So some of the community benefits, we, this will be leading to construction jobs, thirty-five to forty construction jobs, two permanent jobs, and that those will be as an onsite manager, property manager, and onsite building technician. And it'll meet the demands for quality affordable housing in the community. So here's a building elevation, if you were here last year, it's exactly the same, it's a mix of masonry, brick masonry, and fiber cement board. The great thing about this is this will have an elevator, so I don't know, I don't think there are many buildings in the area that are, have the ADA accessibility and an elevator. We think this would, even though we're removing the restriction, we think that this could be a great community for seniors who need the elevator and who need ease of access and accessibility component. So property management, we will, we own and manage the property, and we'll do so for the long term. I talked about our onsite staff, that in addition to the building technician being at the site, he'll also be on call twenty-four seven to deal with emergencies. And then with regard to security features, we'll have electronic key fobs, security cameras, and again, the aforementioned onsite staff. So that's my quick presentation. I wanted to address some of the, some of the concerns I heard, so number of people living in each unit, so in the one bedrooms, most will have two, a couple, live in the one bedrooms each. And then the two bedrooms, it could be two, a couple in one bedroom, and then two children, potentially. We don't anticipate that each of those will have that many occupants, so we expect it to be a smaller household on average. In terms of the size of the units, a one-bedroom unit will be six hundred and ninety-five square feet, the two-bedroom units will be nine hundred and seven square feet. So just wanted to give you a little bit of accurate information. We will be paying property taxes, and this will represent a twelve and a half million dollar investment into the community. So I'm happy to answer any questions in my head.
Questions?
There was a question about Egress, and I do see just one. What did the study say about Egress? Or was there a study on Egress?
We haven't heard any concerns about Egress, we presented this to the city, Callie, I don't know if you wanna speak to that, but we think it's sufficient.
Why are you coming to us with a, making this more of a, a little whipper?
Fair question.
So we, we applied for funding from the state to build this development last year. We weren't able to get the funding. This year, they set up the score in such that if you're doing senior versus non-señor, you're at a fourteen-point disadvantage on a hundred-point scale. So we don't think we would be competitive for the funding if we went with senior, so that's why we're removing the restriction. But like I said, the building, the physical shape of the building remains, so, and we do still intend to market to seniors. Again, because we're moving the restriction, we can't limit it to seniors, but it's not really for families, the way it's built.
So you will manage, your company will manage it, so will you screen? How will you screen, I guess is the better question, how do you screen this?
Sure, so we always do a criminal background check, we do a credit check, we need a landlord reference, and then they, each household needs an income qualified. So we do an initial income certification, and we have a long list of documents our folks need to provide, and then we do annual recertifications. Each household has to sign a twelve-month lease, and if, and we also have building rules, if people violate those rules, they will be affected. So we take all of that seriously. Yeah, so that's, that's how we do it. We also do quarterly inspection agreements.
You said that your investment, your time would be long-term involvement with the project, you know, once it's completed, can you define the long-term for me, please?
What I anticipate at least thirty years.
Thirty years?
What is your plan for overflow parking if that becomes a situation? Because I still think if you have a two-person household, and especially if you're opening up to families and so forth, more than likely, each one of those individuals is gonna have a vehicle. So therefore, you're opening up more vehicles, and you're already short on the space.
That's not necessary lyrics for affordable households. We have a portfolio of several thousand units, so we don't, and we have a parking study to back that up, so I don't, especially given that, if we had a lot of two and three bedrooms, I think that would be a bigger concern, but given that it's thirty-five one bedrooms and eleven two bedrooms, that the unit mix doesn't limit itself to that many cars.
Do your developments typically take place in areas that do have sidewalks and are in close proximity, say to grocery stores and restaurants? To eliminate the need for the cars?
When we're in a more built-up environment, so we build from, I mean, from more rural environments, where it's very similar to this condition, to, I mean, we're doing something in Chicago right now, so it really depends on the environment, it's a very built-up environment, we, you know, walkability is very much a premium. We understand that in certain situations, they're much more car-oriented environments, and so we understand that.
I just don't consider this being an area where they, any resident could easily walk to a grocery store, so I mean, to compare it to a public development.
Right, and I think most, most developments in communities of this size, our folks are relying on their cars often, so that's what we're trying on.
How long do you anticipate you just take the bill?
About twelve to fourteen months.
Was that, you're saying you got five or six construction jobs, that's a lot of work for five or six guys, that's a big building.
Oh, I, I, yeah, thirty-five, forty.
Okay. Thank you.
But you said it would provide construction jobs for our area, so are you planning on using local contractors if you can?
We plan on at least using local subcontractors, to the extent that they, there are, they're available, yes. I mean, that works, that's beneficial for us, because we want to use those same contractors for service maintenance contracts, and it's really hard if you use someone who's far away and we need servicing, it doesn't make sense to hire someone from Chicago for subcontracting.
Is there a motion to waive second reading? Is there a second?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Frerch?
No.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Bo?
No.
Mr. Brock?
No.
Mr. Verres?
This is voting on second reading, correct? Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
And Mr. Kim?
No.
Four, three.
Two, four, three, no.
Four, three, no, thank you. So we will put this off, looks like we have a second reading in our next call. Thanks, councilman. Okay? Thank you very much for your quick input. Alderman's reports, and Alderman's. I'll start with you.
Thank you for the opportunity to serve this city, I appreciate being considered, and I appreciate the opportunity to learn.
Thank you, I'm glad to have you here. Wendell?
Welcome, my new councilwoman, Mary Wright. I will take the opportunity to thank all the employees of the city and my fellow councilmen, everyone, for the lovely flower arrangement that was provided for my brother's services as untimely death about a week ago. It was very much appreciated.
Rodney?
Welcome, Mary. We work in other ways together, but.
She has the charges, right?
Yes, and Wendell, I'm sorry for your loss.
Thank you, sir.
Mike?
Hi, welcome, Mary. I can't say Mary necessarily, Mrs. Bo is still at school.
I don't have nothing, thank you, welcome, Mary. I wouldn't say welcome, but nothing further than that.
John?
Welcome to Ward One, pretty awesome work, though. And also, it was great to see the CEO of the students, yeah, it's, I remember, gosh, I don't even know how many years ago, when we kind of set the very first meeting.
Two thousand fifteen.
Two thousand fifteen, yeah, that seems a little, it's long ago, it was long ago. But to see that come to fruition and see those kids, I mean, it's just, it's just awesome to see the, you know, the, you know, he was talking about failures and, you know, that not being a big deal, if he does fail, so I mean, that's, I mean, that's a hard life lesson to learn in the long run, so that's really cool, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Chief's report?
I just want to say thank you for consideration and for passing the ordinance on cannabis recreation, it's not going away, so it's nice to be able to talk to you.
Thank you. City administrative report?
All I have tonight is the welcome, Mary, to the city council. As I have always done, to your constituents up there, is offer to come in to city hall, at your earliest convenience, to meet staff, and go over what their roles are responsible in. So if you shoot me an email with a couple of times, the dates, we'll make arrangements for you to get the grand tour.
Excellent.
That's all I have, Mr. Mary.
You're kidding. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I always need to forget one thing.
That's alright.
Since we addressed cannabis tonight, I do want you, those of you who do not know, there was a county zoning board meeting earlier this weekend, two gentlemen did get zoning approved for a road facility, so it is in Pike County, and will be developed within the next few months.
At this time, the council is not going to close session for the purposes of discussing real estate, selling price of sale or lease, and pending litigation that we have with the city, or even with the city, so I entertain wishing to go into closed session.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
An apple.
Mr. Verres?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Mr. Verres?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
And Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Thank you, I can assure all of you that are still here, we will not go for any another day to adjourn with our sessions.